For folks listening along online, the council just came out of executive session. So we're just taking a couple of minutes to switch to our regular meeting and we'll get started in a minute.
Tuesday, October twenty twenty two at seven oh six P M. And I'll call this meeting the Berry City Council the order. Counselors present tonight, we have Counselor Dearing, Counselor Sean Bell, Counselor Booton, Counselor Wazza, Counselor Stockwell, and Counselor Lozon, and I am Mayor Hemmerich, Staff President, Manager Sterling Gastro, Coach Treasurer Dawes. We have Don Money, Don Money and the Finance Director, Chief Vale, Deputy Chief Eastman, and interim Chief Altworth for the Fire Department. And do we have any other staff members joining us?
No.
So tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted. Is being recorded and broadcast and subject. The city offers online access as a convenience and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand or signal that you would like to be recognized. And those in the room should come to the front table. I'll call on speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. I'd ask that you state your name for the record and place of residence and speak into the microphone so council can, public can hear you. I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil and respectful way. And if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we will get it sorted. That takes us to item two on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda, City Manager Sterling Castro.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. One adjustment to the agenda to add a new item four F to the consent agenda to authorize me to execute Wheelock House lease extension.
So there's a proposal authorized the execution of the Wheelock House extension. Are there any objections from council?
Nope, and we'll ratify next week.
With ratification next week, okay. If there are no objections, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda from city councilors? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to visitors and communication. This is an opportunity for anybody joining us to speak to a matter that is not on the agenda. Is there any matter not on the agenda that someone would like to speak to tonight?
Give a second for anyone online going on. Seen them.
All right. We'll move on from visitors and communication. And if you would like to speak to any item on the agenda, as I said, just feel free to raise your hand and we'll, we'll recognize you. So that takes us to the consent agenda. We now have one, six items on the consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty two. We have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October eighteen, twenty twenty two. We have approval of the city warrants from the week of Wednesday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. And do we have any clerk's offices, license permit, none, none there? And we have an acceptance of the Vermont Department of Public Safety FY twenty two State Homeland Security Grant Program Award for communications equipment. And, and then we have the authorization of the execution of the lease for the Wheelock House to be ratified next week. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stockwell. Second by Counselor Sean Bell. Any, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, guys have it, the consent agenda is adopted. I'll sign the warrants. That takes us to our city clerk and treasurer report.
A couple of things, a continuing reminder that the general election is two weeks from today. On November eighth, I put something on front porch forum this afternoon, just a continuing reminder to people about when we vote, where we vote, and also that ballots were mailed to all active voters and how they can process their ballots either by voting early and bringing them into the office or bringing them to the polls or actually bringing them unvoted to the polls and going through the, the process of, of check in and marking their ballots and feeding them into the tabulators at the polls, whatever works best for them, along with a reminder that if you are not yet registered, but you're a resident of Berry City, you can register in advance online or in the office or at the polls. The Board of Civil Authority is scheduled to meet tomorrow evening at six o'clock in this room. This is the second, we have just one property tomorrow. We will hear the report of the inspection team and then go into deliberative session to make a decision. The Board of Civil Authority is also scheduled to meet next Thursday, the third. That's the traditional pre-election meeting on at six o'clock again in this room. And actually, Mr. Manager, what I'll do is coordinate with you because I know that the plan is to have some kind of materials available at the polls around the ARPA survey, and that requires Board of Civil Authority approval. So we'll, we'll coordinate getting an example for them to see at that meeting. And I think that's all.
All right, so that's a Board of Civil Authority meeting tomorrow at six P M.
Yep.
And then another one on Thursday the third.
Yep.
The city councilors will admit to showing up to both of those meetings.
Well, it has to my attendance record, I'm very good.
I would, I would say the one for tomorrow, there's no point in coming unless you participated in the one on September twenty eighth, when we had the initial hearing, because you have to have heard that hearing to participate in the decision. But with regards to the November third, it would be great to have participation at that meeting, which is our pre-election meeting. Even better, it would be great to have people respond to the email I sent out yesterday asking for B C A members to volunteer to work at the polls. So if you look at that email and the, the different slots, time slots I put there and you have an opportunity to be available, let me know.
Any questions for the clerk, Counselor Shumel?
I am not getting the emails. I, I haven't really.
Okay, all right. As far as I know, I'm sending it to the Sean Bell at BerryCity.org, but I will.
Okay. I will confirm. Reason they are not coming through.
Okay.
Counselor Booton?
And you've got me scheduled.
All damn day. Because Michael is always willing to be there and the last one out the door with me. And I, I greatly appreciate it, I really do, so yes. I do.
I don't. She lets me have like a two, three hour lunch though.
I don't have that email from you, but I'll definitely sign up to help out.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the email sent, this one's a little about Wednesday, ten nineteen about help with tomorrow's ballot review because I assume you're using the same list. And I see Counselor Booton, myself, Counselor Stockwell and the mayor, but I do not see Counselor Sean Bell.
All right.
For whatever reason. All right. And my other question, my actual question, are we still doing the tabulator thing on Thursday morning?
Yes.
Making sure it was still.
Yep, we're in case anybody's interested in.
Yeah, that's very.
Are we still doing the thing with the tabulator? Yes, Thursday morning at ten o'clock, we're doing our required logic and accuracy testing of the tabulators up on the second floor of Alumni Hall. And I have, we have a few people that are going to be participating in the testing, not only to help with that, but also to become more familiar with the, the tabulators. We're going to be losing our B C A member who has been a longtime tabulator queen. And so we're, we're, we're working on succession planning. So that's ten A M Alumni Hall, second floor. If you have a burning desire to watch us feed unofficial, uncounted ballots into the tabulator, they're so marked, so. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Clerk Treasurer Dawes? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. Are there any applications to consider?
There's no applications to consider, but I, I would mention people may have seen the article in today's paper. We have received an application from a Green Mountain Hatch for a manufacturer's tier two license. They're working their way through the zoning process and it will come to the council for approval at next week's meeting, so.
Next week, this is a retailer cultivation license.
It's manufacturer.
Manufacturer, okay.
There's, there's.
Oh, that's when you're processing.
Yes, yep, yep. Though it's in conjunction with, they will be working in conjunction with Forebend's Finest, so. It's all part of the same sort of. Yes, that's a good word.
I know, I never get to use it.
All right, so that takes us to item number seven, the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. So just a couple items to update the council on from this week. Was able to do the D P W Town Hall. This was the last in a series of town halls with all the city staff. This one had to be rescheduled, but was about to get down to the garage this week to talk to the crews. Great conversation, really talked about, you know, the work that happens down there is, and is a lot of our city residents interact with the government, the street sidewalks plowing, so, you know, talk to them about, you know, the, the, the expectations for them and really the excitement about the, the amount of work that's coming their way with, with all the, the ARPA that we're doing, the capital improvement plan. So just really excited to get to know those crews that, that do a lot of that work. And they're busy this week, water's back on on Warren Street. We had water main work that interrupted service yesterday. It's happening from long to Cleary Street and it should be finished within the week, but the water is back and running to the, the sixty homes that were affected. Those crews are doing semi-annual flushing starting next week. Notices will start going out tomorrow, so residents should see those. There'll be a notice in the paper as well on Friday and Saturday. And then working with the, they're collaborating with the state on some lane painting happening on Washington Hill Street, Merchant Street and Lower Berlin Street. So just improvement to some of our, our, our streets. And then the crews, the staff getting ready for winter season at the B O R, the ice has started going down. Could do our meeting there next time, it's nice and cool in there. So, public skating sessions start November eighth and Stephanie started to look for guards. So if you're interested or you want to make your kid work as a skate guard, have them contact Stephanie. But the the skating sessions, the, the hockey teams, the adult leagues all star here in November at the B O R. Had a meet and greet with Emma Green, just on a walk from still, so excited to work with her. Got to not be the, the new kid in town when, when we meet and she's in the room. But she's great to meet her and looking forward to met most of the merchants on Main Street, but Emma and I will be doing a, a walk with Tracy to meet all the, the others that I haven't had a chance to meet yet. And we can do two birds, one stone, let me do some of those folks. So looking forward to that. And then last, had my last meeting with committee chairs. Mentioned I spoke to all the committee chairs last month, met with D R B last week, which was the last group that I had to do. And looking forward to come back to council on our whole committee reset now that I've had a chance to meet with all the, the leadership on those, those boards. And then just a couple of heads up for the week ahead before the next council meeting. And Counselor Loz, I won't get too far ahead of you. I, I know we spoke about Counselor Loz, I connected us with Dick Wabi, who's doing Wheels for Warmth. And so had a chance to go down with Police Chief, Deputy Chief. So just really to residents to know, there's a wonderful event happening there this week. And just my piece of it, I'll let Counselor Loz on talk about the rest of it, but there'll be calming measures.
No, you did.
There'd be a lot of traffic.
Let it rip. You did, you did all the work, so it's.
So it's.
I'm just gonna be stacking tires, okay? You know, so. Thanks for the Adam boy.
So Thursday to, Thursday through Saturday, great event. It is Wheels for Warmth, they accept recycled or donated tires. Donations happen Thursday and Friday, collections, and you can buy wheels there on Saturday. Saturday's probably the day where folks going down three oh two, three oh two to the Granite Museum may experience some traffic. So just we're gonna have some traffic calming, just be patient, it's a popular event. And just want to, you know, let people not be surprised by that. But I know the chief deputy chief have a good plan in place and had a good conversation with Dick. We're gonna be working together, make sure that it's, it's as least disruptive as possible, but it's for a, a great cause. And then just a lot of Halloween activities going on this week. So just a reminder, be on the lookout for kids, safe on the roads. And as a lot of kiddos will be out several days this week with some great events. Costume Parade is Saturday on the twenty ninth at two thirty. And so kids can line up at cap. The kids, there's a, a kids' party at Gusto's immediately after that from one to four, it's ten dollars for family for lots of fun activities. And do it in costume as well. And then on Halloween itself, the thirty first, you can do some trick or treating on Main Street from four to five p.m. So I want to thank Tracy, she, you know, she does a lot of work at the partnership to, to get these events coordinated and set up. But just be on the lookout for, for all those kids in costume this week, getting candy.
Thanks for the update. Are there any questions? Counselor Wazza.
Not a question, just wanted to give kudos to the manager and the D P W team on Warren Street. They went out before the work was done and leaf littered the neighborhood, so folks knew it was coming. And then the manager was good enough to go out of his way to send a notice to myself and Counselor Booton as the ward two reps to let our constituents know that that work was happening. So just thank you for all this.
Any other questions? I would just, I, I think this enhanced communication is such a great thing and also that you're making time to, to meet with so many people in the community, the merchants, the staff. You know, I know it's probably hard to feel like you can fit that in, but. That's important. Yeah, so great, such a great onboarding. The other thing I would just mention just about the V train on striping in, in some past years, V train is when they've striped some of our corridors, they've put it in the center line of the road when there's on-street parking allowed in one section versus allowing alignment that recognizes where.
I think that's exactly what they're trying to correct is make sure that they're accounting for the, for streets with, with parking.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, because I think it discourages people from using those parking spaces sometimes. All right, so that takes us, unless there's any other question, city manager? That takes us to unfinished business of which we have known, right? Okay, so our first item of new business is the extra mile day Merrill proclamation. Thanks to nominations made by Counselor Dearing, Counselor Booton and Counselor Stockwell last week. I know you read the bases behind your nominations, but I'll just read them again for, for our three nominees.
And this is exactly what's being submitted to the Extra Mile America Organization tomorrow, so.
Okay, yeah, and they asked for a pretty brief, they're brief, but they asked for a brief, brief paragraph. So the first nominee is Ashley and Jason Aldridge. Ashley and Jason, Jason have served our community through the Berry Youth Sports Association, B Y S A Football Program, having dedicated countless hours to our youth. Both Ashley and Jason have served on the board in leadership positions. And Jason also connects with the children on the field as a head coach. The time and dedication they have put into this program is priceless to our next generation. Thank you. Margaret Ferguson, Margaret Ferguson has been a vital support for Berry residents and others for over twenty years. She has helped many go from crisis to success from wondering how they were going to pay their rent to running their own business. No matter what time of day, Margaret was there to help. If need a place to live or an extra hand at four A M, Margaret was there. Renita Marshall, with a passion for helping those in need, Renita founded the Renita Marshall Helping Hands Foundation about ten years ago, providing support to local families through volunteer and donated efforts. Projects have included free swimming lessons and pool passes for children, back to school clothing and supplies, holiday gifts for families in need, winter tires for safe travel to doctor's appointments and grocery gift cards for out of work parents. And so I'll read the proclamation and we'll, we'll have copies for, for those of you in the room tonight. Berry's, City of Berry, Vermont, Merrill Proclamation, naming November first, twenty twenty two, Extra Mile Day. Whereas Berry City, Vermont, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas Berry City, Vermont encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas Berry City, Vermont chooses to shine a light on and celebrate those who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Berry City, Vermont brings these names forward to the Extra Mile Organization as examples of the many people and organizations who step forward to support our community through their service and commitment. Jason and Ashley Aldrich, Margaret Ferguson, Renita Marshall. Whereas Berry City, Vermont acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, twenty twenty two by submitting these names for recognition of the type of efforts that epitomize what makes a community. Now therefore, I, Jake Hemmerich, Mayor of the City of Berry, Vermont, do hereby proclaim November first, twenty twenty two to be Extra Mile Day. Thanks to city councilors. I urge each individual in the community to take time on that day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but also to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, communities, country and world a better place. And witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand to fix the official seal, seal of the City of Berry in the State of Vermont this twenty-fifth day of October, two thousand twenty twenty two A D. And I see, I think the Aldriches are the only, yeah.
And we have. Yeah, we have the Ferguson's and Renita Marshall are here online as well. Yes.
And I assume the Ferguson's and Renita can come and pick one up at.
We can nail all of them.
It'll be mailed, wow.
We will mail them out to them.
That's just the service Ferguson provides.
That's right.
We can spring for the envelope.
Well, thank you so much. And if, if anybody would like to take a few minutes, if you want to just share anything, you're welcome to, but if not, that's fine too.
Well, we, we couldn't have done it without our other volunteers, board members, head coaches, even the parents, just maybe the program of good stuff. Getting to pick them out and playing sports and being part of the community.
Thank you. Renita or Margaret?
No pressure.
No pressure.
Margaret and Renita both say thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I was just honored with this, thank you very much.
Well deserved.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's special to be able to pause and celebrate the, the contributions and, and thankful to Counselor Stockwell, Counselor Booton and Counselor Dearing for setting up the subcommittee and making the nominations, so. And with that, that takes us to the, the really, another exciting thing on the agenda, the FY twenty four Budget Department reviews from the Police Department and Fire and Emergency Medical Services, the twenty-five percent of the full pie.
Yep. So, yeah. It is. So, what we Chief Vale saying a couple of notes. When we did our kickoff, I, I, I heard a line in the sand on body cameras and we heard it. I think if you had a chance to review the presentation, it may look, because of the, because of when we started our budget process, it came up cross as a reduction of body cameras, and that was simply what we did was remove from the general fund. And we have a, a plan to, to start implementation that doesn't include general fund sources, which helps us keep that weight down, helps us use some one-time resources. So I just want to make sure that if that had not kind of come across, that we did hear the, the, the interest on body cameras. And I, I think Counselor Wass's act, we, we're not gonna force you to step over that line, I hope.
Thank you.
So I'll start there and then I'll say we, we also provided the line by line. I know when the name, but you know, this is also council's chance to go through those items. I know the chief will cover high level, but really this is council's opportunity, not just for the police budget, but for the fire EMS budget, all the budgets that follow after that. I guess I should have given you that warning for our budget, we got away with that clerk and gone. But no, just a chance that this, you know, the chief will cover the highlights, but you have in your packet the line by line. Welcome to entertain those questions as, as we go through.
Great. So as you can see, the Police Department budget and its subsidiaries, if you will, the meters enforcement and the emergency communications budget accounts for twenty-five percent of the overall city budget. If you could go to the next slide, this is kind of what your money gets in a nutshell. This is, the Police Department has the, the budget between the three general ledger sections include twenty-nine and a half full-time employees. The half is the administrative assistant that is split between police and fire. We also have thirteen part-time employees under those three general ledger sections. This is just an overall breakdown of our organizational structure. As you can see, we, we have patrol side of the house. We have criminal investigations, the emergency communications center, and then meters enforcement under the support services side of the house. We also have an embedded mental health clinician, which we pay twenty thousand dollars for. We split with Montpelier through Washington County Mental Health. And we have a criminal analyst on staff that does not belong to us per se monetarily, if you will. They are Vermont Air National Guard, full-time on orders embedded with us. And they do a great job for us in, in that aspect. If you want to flip to the next slide. Okay, so this is the overview for the overall three sections. You can see there the, the difference between the FY twenty-three approved and the proposed and FY twenty-four. Between dispatch, you'll see the percent of increase on the far right there. As you can see, dispatch does have what looks to be a larger percentage increase than the other sections of the budget. And the little text box there will show you that because in FY twenty-two, it was budgeted at less than fifty percent of actuals, we based some of that on what the actuals are projected to be for embedded overtime as well as the personnel increases. And a lot of this is, um, contractual for the increases. So the overall, the overall, um, increase in our, our budget would be four point three nine percent as proposed. You can go to the next slide. So this is a dispatch breakdown. Um, the emergency communication center provides round-the-clock dispatch services, not only to our own police and fire agency, but as well as the fire and EMS services for Washington and Williamstown under contract, as well as non-regular work hours for Washington County Sheriff's Department. Over on the left, you'll just see that's just a, uh, nifty little pie chart that shows that we do bear the brunt of funding for the communication center on the revenue side. Um, eight percent of that is made up by, um, contract funding, which, um, for those, for those two communities. The call volume that comes through there, you can see in the chart on the, uh, right there, those are actual calls that come into the dispatch um, center from all the communities and all the services, be it police, fire, EMS. So they do handle a large number of calls that come through the center, and, um, I want to commend those folks as well, because they're doing a great job with that.
Chief, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, with, I'm just curious as to what the proportion is. So if he is funding ninety-two percent exactly going lineup, is it roughly ninety-two percent of calls are coming from Berry City? Or do you see a significantly larger number than eight percent of calls coming from?
No, the, the, the other communities for fire and EMS, their, their, um, call, they're not full-time agencies. They're, they're call firefighters and call EMS personnel, and they do not have a large volume per se. So the majority of the calls do come from the fire EMS and police here in Berry City.
So that eight percent that we're getting from them, you feel is relatively fair for the amount of calls?
Yes, yeah. And, um, we are going to be looking at, um, this, this is neither here nor there, but we are going to be looking at, um, revamping how, how those fees are are consumed, if you will, um, through this whole dispatch, uh, project that we're doing. Okay, so the overview for, um, their budget in communications, as you can see, personnel wages is eighty-one percent of the overall operating costs. Um, what that gets you, what that funds is right now, six full-time communication specialists, and we have, uh, point eight full-time equivalent and part-time dispatchers um, that do fill in some of the shifts as appropriate, um, and give us ample coverage, um, when needed. The revenue, um, through the escalator that we have built into the current fee schedule is up, uh, about nineteen hundred dollars this year over, um, last year. And through the budget congress, um, one of the reductions that we made in the original proposed budget was in that area was in professional development training. We have a plan to move that, um, into the, into the next cycle. Go to the next slide, please. On the police services side of the house, these, the, the chart here shows, uh, total emergency and non-emergency calls for police service. So what you saw on the, the first slide was all of the calls coming into the center. This is police, um, service calls alone that come into the center. You can see, um, it has fluctuated, um, through the, through the COVID years, but relatively it, it, it stays pretty consistent for police call services. Um, right now, we have already answered this year, um, more calls than the same, the same amount of calls that we answered last, this time last year. I, I don't see who had their hand up first. I'm sorry.
So are most of the calls non-emergency or the emergency?
It's, it's a mixture. So for non-emergency calls, what are classified as non-emergency calls would be like the officers, um, having an incident punched for, um, directed patrols and those, those sorts of things. Foot patrols, diff- different non-emergency calls. There are emergency calls, obviously, that come in requesting a call, um, a response by, by officers.
And the balance is, who knows?
I, I could get that information for you for, for a very accurate count, um, but I would roughly say it's, you know, sixty, forty.
Thank you.
Just had noticed the, the escalation from tw- uh, twenty seventeen up to twenty nineteen, and then the drop with COVID, obviously, in twenty twenty, and then our actuals for twenty twenty-two. Do you feel the need that in the future that we're going to need additional resources to make sure that our city can be properly provided for, whether it be communication specialists to get the dispatch stuff done, or whether it be actual boots on the ground people or in cars, um, doing the work?
Right, I, I do. I think, you know, we're on a path of attempting to right-size the agency, if you will, um, and we are looking at um, additional staffing in the communication center first. Um, and a lot of it does, um, hinge upon, you know, reorganizing the way things are done. Um, again, a lot of it's contractual, but I, I do feel that we will need additional resources to right-size the agency in the future.
My next question to that would be, are we using the police at, uh, forfeitures from drug busts and things like that to help maybe potentially fund some of these things?
We have utilized the asset forfeiture to fund various things in the agency, yes.
Okay.
Not, not staffing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna win. I think it's, it, it has specific uses.
Yes, there's, there's specific guidelines in which we can spend those funds.
And, and I think, and the chief mentioned that, that we wouldn't want to use it for recurring costs because.
Of course not, right.
Yeah, yeah, you can't go down the supplanting.
Right, yep.
I was just out of curiosity. If I call down to dispatch and ask them to transfer me to, to one of you or somebody, does that get logged as a phone call or, or it, does it not?
It does not.
Okay, good.
These, what, what's your scene?
You want us to do something for you?
Yeah, you see that number that says eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine?
Yeah.
Ten thousand or a few, for you calling me.
That one, that's the asterix.
Yeah, that's the asterix.
No, so the, the phone calls, if it generates what's called an incident in the records management system. So if you call up and you say there's an accident on North Main Street, the communication specialist will generate the incident, which you see in those numbers there, and that, that'll get, you know, make, make those numbers.
Thank you.
All good on questions?
Thank you.
Okay, if we can move on to the next slide. Um, here's the if you will, uh, of the, uh, personnel wages account for eighty-three percent of the operating costs on, on this side of the house. What that funds there is, um, fourteen patrol officers and first-line patrol supervisors. So that includes your officers, corporals, and sergeants. Um, three and a half detectives and one school resource officer. Um, so you'll see it says a half a detective. Um, part of the funding does come, um, through, currently, it was through one of the grants. Two managers, which is the deputy chief and myself, uh, half of an administrative assistant, um, shared with the fire department, uh, quarter of a mental health clinician. We have a community outreach specialist, um, who's doing a wonderful job as well. And then the part-time officer funding. The reductions that we made here from the budget congress, um, were the body cameras. Um, but we can talk about that. We do have alternate, uh, alternative funding planned for that. Um, our TASER program, so through the body camera program, they have a bundle option where you can bundle all that together for savings. So that allowed us to deplete or negate the fifth year, fifth or fourth year of the TASER contract, fifth? Was it a five-year? Yeah, it's five. Yeah, so it, it would, it would essentially negate, um, that fifth year of that current TASER contract as well as the supplies that we had budgeted previously under that contract would be rolled up into the body worn camera program um, through Axon. Um, we've also reduced part-time officer funding and the security cameras with inside the public safety building. We have moved that over to the capital improvement plan. Um, and then jail operations, um, again, that was a bone of contention. Uh, when I got here, I didn't realize we operated a jail. Um, I learned that on day three, but the, the jail operations in the agency, um, it's a huge liability. And if you look at what we had budgeted and the revenue that came in, which shouldn't even really be used as a revenue source anyway. Um, but it, it was just a huge liability risk, and our staff is not trained to be correction officers and, um, monitor those folks, uh, like they should be in a correctional center.
Chief, if I could just, um, you and I spoke about this last week or the week before, whenever, um, and you gave a really great example about how, uh, not just uh, training and stuff, but how it affects the date, having this facility being used impacts the day-to-day operations of the police department and often inhibits officers or takes officers away from tasks that they would be doing.
Correct.
Where they should not be. And I would just love for you to give the community and the council an.
Absolutely. Um, for instance, our communication staff has to monitor those individuals, the detainees in the cell um, on the camera system. Realistically and by standard, you should have thirty minutes face-to-face observations with any detainee for safety reasons. In a correctional center, that's what you get. Um, in, in our correctional center, if you will, or jail operations, we, we don't have that ability to. So that in and of itself is a liability, um, by not having that ability to do that. Um, the officers have to come in, they have to grab the credit card and run and buy food, uh, to feed the detainees. So that ties up an officer doing that. Again, on the liability side of the house, um, there as well. Um, we're not nutritionists. We don't, uh, go in there and ask them for a whole list of their allergies. They go and they purchase the food and they bring it back and they either eat it or they don't. So that, that creates another liability as well. Um, so there's a lot that goes into running a correctional center, and that's why they have trained correctional officers in an actual correctional facility.
Yeah, I just want to point out, because I heard you snicker, uh, not snicker, but it was kind of snicker. It wasn't like, like Stouffer's food. It was actually like restaurant, correct?
At, at one point, it was, at one point, it used to be.
Frustrating, like I, I, I found that to be really annoying.
At one point, it used to be from, what was it called? Soups and soups and greens. Um, right now, honestly, it's, it's Cumberland Farms. So they go to Cumberland Farms and you'll get a, a pre-made sandwich or, or whatever and, and a drink, and that's what you get fat.
I, I make the comment, because I, I remember hearing about that the first time. I'm like, I'd go down to Price Chopper and get the dollar meals.
I, I would say that what the, what they used to get from soup and greens was, you know, like two pieces of toast and a cup of coffee for breakfast. So I mean, it, it wasn't, you know, the omelet and the, yeah, it was pretty rudimentary.
So, well, now I feel like a bad person.
No. The, the big issue here, honestly, is liability reduction. Um, it, it is a major liability to operate as a, as a jail when we're not set up to.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that it's dispatch that's doing the watching.
Correct.
Dispatch has to be on the phone if there's an emergency and it's not called taking, it's dispatching. They have to stay in connection with emergency services and the accident. So they're supposed to be watching this camera at the same time the dispatching. It just seems such a liability.
And it's on the monitor, you would not be able to tell if somebody was sleeping or somebody was in medical distress, um, if they're motionless. Um, hence the thirty-minute face-to-face observations, which just don't happen. Um, and like you had pointed out, um, counselor, if, if there was a structure fire and they are, uh, you know, going escalating from first alarm to second alarm and toning out different agencies for assistance, they're not paying attention to the, to the camera. So.
It is, it is a huge liability.
So Chief, it sounds like, you know, reduce the liability, shift the operation, but I, I suspect there's a cost to the alternative. And is the alternative the barracks in Berlin or?
No, so the, the correctional center, there's one in Chittenden County and one in St. Johnsbury, depending on if you get a male or a female and, and where they're going, where they're accepted. Um, so yes, there, there is going to be a little bit of change there that you'll see. Um, but we're also going to look at changing how we, we operate in that sense. Um, and working with, with the court system on, you know, when you call, um, to lodge somebody, you do have the ability to flash site and those types of things where they don't get lodged. Um, so we're going to change how we operate.
Do you think it's going to net out as kind of a, a, a balance or a?
I don't, I mean, it, it will be a little bit of a cost. It's not going to be a, it's not going to balance out.
Okay.
That was the same question, pretty much.
I mean, we will essentially, when we do have those lodges coming from our agency, um, the officer's going to have to train or there'll have to be an officer that transports them either to St. Johnsbury or to Chittenden County. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, is that a duty officer chief, or would that be someone called in?
It depends. Um, for instance, if you have a three-person or a four-person shift, um, then the officer can just transport on shift, and there's, there's no cost other than, you know, the fuel cost to, to go up there and back. Um, if it is somebody that has to be called in, then yes, there will be a cost for that.
And how many, do you have any idea how many detainees on a annual basis?
I do have those numbers on my desk.
If you want, if you want to guess, if, if you're off by twenty-five percent, I'm not going to flip.
So, just, the detainees, the detainees just for Berry City, um, could you give a rough estimate? I, I do have the exact numbers. I did a five-year breakdown.
No, I don't, I don't want to bother you with that.
There's a, a lot of, again, is, is other agencies as well. Which also adds to our liability, obviously, because when somebody gets out of hand in the cells, we end up having to deal with them. Our officers are the ones that end up getting hurt. But, you know, we, Berry City is very busy, so, um, to say that we don't have a number of lodges, um, we can't say that, because we would, you know, sometimes we go in there and there'll be somebody in the cells every day. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean they're always, that's always the case for, for, I guess, for me to guess on a number. I don't think I could get, I could, I could give you a guess.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, have we done, have you done any sort of analysis in terms of, you know, I realize there's liability issues.
Yep.
But if we, if we just, just so we can be prepared, if there are, you know, one hundred, just to throw a number up here.
I do plan on doing that.
Barry that are going to St. J, it's, you know, forty-five minutes to St. J. I'm not sure what the processing time is, half an hour, maybe. Uh, so that's, you know, under the best of circumstances and not in a snowstorm, that's, that's a two-hour, you know, trip for an officer.
I do plan on doing that full analysis. That's why I gathered all those numbers. I just haven't completed that full analysis yet.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Next slide. This is our, our meters and parking, um, section of the house. Um, so our parking personnel, they monitor the meter and/or permitted parking within the twelve city lots, as well as along the, uh, metered streets and the various streets within the business district. Um, you can see that the COVID pandemic did have a, uh, effect on the amount of, um, tickets that were issued through this. Um, a lot of what has happened now, we're seeing some subsequent remote work um, and less people parking, um, on the streets. Um, that is just the amount of parking tickets that were written. Um, on the revenue side, I did, um, thank you, Carol, for, for giving me the, the breakdown. I did have a breakdown um, of what the city actually takes in, um, for, uh, monetary revenue from the parking meters and, and, and the app, if anybody's interested in that. Um, it's not a true enterprise fund, um, but it, 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 it's, it's a healthy amount that we have there.
I'd be curious, what's the, what's the total?
So, um, Carol was kind enough to, um, do a five-year breakdown. So the beginning balance as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, um, was six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, the year prior on twenty twenty, it was five hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Um, it's, it's roughly around the same as it goes through, uh, the year prior, twenty nineteen was five hundred and fifty-one thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Twenty eighteen was four hundred and ninety-one thousand, a hundred and ninety. Um, so it's, it's a good revenue um, that comes in, and that's, that's not parking ticket fines. That's just revenue from the parking apps and, and the coins.
Yeah, so that's permanent. Yeah, so that's permits and the.
And, yes, and permits.
Did you see an increase when we started using Park Mobile?
So Park Mobile came in in, what, twenty eight? Uh, you had told me this too.
Was right about at the start of the pandemic and so it was very, it was very, very slow. But in the last six months, we've seen us.
Yes, there is, there is, there is an increase because of Park Mobile. Um, you know, for instance, in twenty sixteen, it was three hundred and eighty-seven thousand and that, that was just coin and, and permit. So it has gone up be, because of Park Mobile. So I think that was a good, a good investment there.
Yeah, I'll just say.
Cost us anything. I mean, that was one of the things that, that I.
Was this one of your projects?
Yes. Yeah, that any service charges are on the, the user, not on the city.
Uh, I know that for me, when I do Park Mobile, I, I book two hours and I might be one hour. And, and that's one of the benefits and I shouldn't say that out loud, but it's, it's true. That's one of the benefits of Park Mobile is that you may overspend on that. Okay, now I feel bad for saying, oh, well.
Well, hopefully next time you'll get a ticket to, you know.
What'd you say?
I said, maybe next time you'll get a ticket to kind of break even there.
On the two thousand five hundred tickets that we uh, issued in twenty twenty-two. Um, those go to the judicial bureau and then we get money back from the.
No, the parking, the parking, only, the only tickets that go to the judicial bureau are, are like speeding tickets and, and those types of, of tickets. Parking tickets come, come into the city.
To, okay.
Go to the next slide. Um, for the overview here, what you see there, um, what that funds is one full-time position and one part-time position. They do a wonderful job out there, uh, Dee and John. As you can see from all the, all the tickets and, and all the revenue and everything that comes in. Um, there's, is just on the backs of those, those two individuals. And, and then the supplies and the maintenance and the reductions that we made there. Um, from the originally, original proposed budget uh, was we reduced the supplies. Um, and then um, Carol got us out of the electric. Oh, electric vehicle charging station, charge point contract um, that we no longer pay.
Yeah, that was a council decision back in December of last year.
So you'll, you'll see those reductions out of the.
Sorry.
I mean, and here's, here's a savings overview. Um, this, this is what we um, kind of chipped away at our, at our uh, budget congress. From what we had originally proposed. So you can see that, you know, we're, we're doing our efforts and um. The bottom line there is over seventy, almost seventy-five thousand dollars. So it is, you know, it is, it'll have an impact, um, you know, over the years. I understand that due diligence was done and, and, you know, trying to save the taxpayers, which I'm very grateful for. But, but trying to right-size things and, and get back, it's, it's going to take some, some crafty work. And the last slide, any, any questions? Yes.
I'm already read into this, but just for those watching along at home, the public, even though this slide says the. Body cameras have been taken out, they are still being implemented in this fiscal year. The funding is just not coming from the general fund.
Correct. We're, we're using alternative funding sources.
I very much appreciate that.
A, a, and I would, I mean, I would expand on that. Clear priority, we heard, I know it's a priority for the chief, you know, even before we heard from the council on that. Um, and so we have the two pathways, uh, there's a grant, I believe it's opening this fall. We have assets, and so that's Plan A. Uh, Plan B is asset forfeiture funds. And then this is not a one-year expense, so there's going to be a commitment from us, you know, hopefully, whether it's grants. In subsequent years, or we have to come back to general fund, but we're taking that first step because we know it's a, it's a big priority.
And I want to thank the chief for making that a priority and the police advisory committee as well for supporting.
Yes.
Uh, what, what non-tax or general fund revenues uh, originate because of activities in your department? Like what's the amount of?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Non, non-general fund revenues or, or non-tax property tax revenues. So what type of income streams are coming from uh, from things that are, that aren't the property tax?
So we do, we do have on the communication side, we have the communications contracts. Um, also, you know, we shouldn't be, I, I call it cash registered justice. Um, we shouldn't be a revenue source, but inevitably through some of the fines from the, some uh, some of the tickets. We do see revenue from that. Um, but I, I don't like to, you know, count that because it shouldn't be counted as, as a, a. And, you, you know, a line item where you're going to say, oh, we're going to make twenty-five thousand dollars or we're going to make fifty thousand dollars. Because that's not, you know, unfortunately, we are the necessary evil, if you will, in, in, in a budget. Because, you know, you need public safety, but we shouldn't be out there making revenue by writing tickets. Um, it's inevitable that you will get revenue, um, but that is a revenue source, if you will.
There's also blue light patrols, though most of that is offset by the, by the expenses associated with the, the officers.
Yes, yeah. So you do see some, you do see in a revenue line, you do see some through what, what I'll call is a pass-through. Um, for like extra duty details where, say you had a construction contract and you needed an officer, um, you'll have. You know, the, you'll bill them, but then we have to pay the officers, but there is, there is a little bit of a, a revenue source there. And then you'll see the grant, um, like the highway safety grant, um, that's all passed through as well. But it shows up on the revenue side of the house too.
And I said, just in the broader context, and that the trend line for the city has been that. Uh, more and more services are being carried by the taxpayers and instead of non-tax revenues, where it used to be a greater share. Of services were um, of the budget, share of the budget uh, was paid for by non-tax revenues. And uh, and, and I recall in prior years, we used to get, I, I thought we got breakdowns by, of the revenue sources by departments, but maybe they're grouped.
We, yeah, we're gonna, that's coming next, next week's presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we figured we do all the revenue, because there's, we're, we're going to make proposals on generating revenues from those types of activities. So we thought it would be helpful to do all of the revenue in one, one, but, but it'll be broken up by, by where it's coming from.
Okay, great. That, that's helpful, because I did notice some, just in prior years, noticed disparities. Uh, between comparable communities and revenues that were coming into Berry City that, to other communities.
Right.
Um, for like activities, um, so, right.
Any other questions on the slide presentation?
Great job, chief. Thanks.
Chiefs.
Chiefs.
And Dawn.
Just sitting there with the.
I'm just a rock star. She's a rock star.
Hold on. Hold on.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, I prepared a statement and then we will uh, review my slides afterwards. Uh, Rick and I tried to get the computer to cough up the PowerPoint and it just wouldn't do it, so. Um, good evening. I like again, thank, this time to uh, give you a brief overview of the department. We ended up fiscal year uh, last year with a total of two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven responses. This is down by a hundred and thirty-eight total calls or service. Seventeen hundred and fifty-two are EMS-related responses and four hundred and twenty-five are fire. Uh, for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two, we are currently at uh, eight hundred and twenty-one calls since July first. This represents a hundred and sixteen calls over this time period from last year. Um, past budgets, I'm pleased to say that last year's budget was underspent. This again makes the last four years of budgets all underspent. As you can see, we have been successful navigating our budget over the last four years. Uh, fiscal year twenty-one came in at uh, ninety-six point four percent. And fiscal year twenty-two is ninety-nine point zero six nine percent. Um, our current budget, we currently are doing well in this year's budget. Per Don, we should be at thirty point seven seven percent expenditure. We are now at twenty-eight point five four percent. Up until uh, October uh, nineteenth, we were fully staffed. And uh, with the well-deserved retirement of Chief Brent and firefighter medic Pruitt moving on to uh, greener pastures. We're currently under the hiring process for both positions. We hope to have these positions filled by the first of the year. Revenues, we're on close to our projections. Ambulance billing always seems to be a moving target due to the number of variables associated with the billing process. The biggest unknown here is usually our payer mix. The payer mix is a breakdown of who is paying the ambulance bills. We keep close track of the payment trends to see what insurance uh, or programs. Are paying and for the transportation of our ambulance patients. In our city, you know, seven out of ten patients uh, in government programs or insurances. Three out of ten are either un, uninsured or in private insurances. Um, this is important to know that that becomes a, a variable for us. Um, as we explained last year, the government programs pay a set amount with the express agreement. That we cannot bill the payment for the remainder, which then must be written off. Um, the past few years are a great example how the variables can affect collections. As highlighted below, above, we actually transported more patients this year. Conversely, the revenue actually increased considerably over last year. Uh, I caution you on that because that is a, a variable that we really can't count on until all the eggs are, are hatched. So I just much cau- cautioned you on that. Um, we do still contract for three other ambulance agencies, First Branch Ambulance, Montpelier and Wilson Fire Department. So again, we have not seen the unwillingness of the public to be, not to be transported to the hospital as we did during the height of the COVID. During the surge of the Omicron variant and additional variants, now COVID is here to stay. And we do everything to protect our personnel and uh, city staff. I believe that most of our patients seem to be taking their healthcare more seriously than pre-COVID. There has been an increase in ambulance transports and the acuity of our patients, which you are watching this trend. From my financial standpoint, this year uh, brought no additional new state or federal programs to assist us. Uh, with Janet and Dawn and myself and the manager, we are watching this to uh, take every advantage of those. Um, we continue to work with the uh, state and local health departments here at uh, McFarland House. And the local health officer uh, is uh, keeping abreast of everything, including guidelines for our city staff. Um, department progress, we continue to make great progress in our fire and EMS training, uh, confined space rescue capability. Um, this year, we also uh, purchased additional uh, equipment to augment this capability. Uh, we continue to, continue to do our multi-year turn-up gear replacement. We replace four sets of gear every year to offset a huge uh, purchase. So that we kind of make it an economical and budget for it. Uh, we continued uh, breathing air tank replacement for having lumps on and have everything fall and expire at the same time. Uh, we trained with some new fire hoses and implemented new standpipe procedures. Uh, at the uh, BTC training facility, that was something new that the uh, we were able to do with our staff. Was highly valuable and get them actually into some high-rise training. We do have a lot of multi-story uh, buildings here in the city and that was actually invaluable. We worked with nearby mutual aid departments. That continues, it'd be a huge thing for us. Because they come in and support us uh, when we have the larger fires and then we support them in turn. Um, that allows us to increase our capabilities and uh, work together and make, make it more fluid response. Um, we also have been in the last year, uh, Chief Brent and I spent a lot of time working with the city of Montpelier, Capital Fire. On the new radio system. Um, I'm happy to say that we received a tentative uh, announcement. We have not gotten anything uh, firmed up yet, about two point four four million dollars uh, towards that. With uh, opportunity to go to phase two, to fund the rest of that, which is approximately another one point one million. So that's a huge undertaking. That was the largest uh, award that was given. And uh, that, that's a great feather in our hats for that.
And sorry, Joe, where was that coming from, that funding?
Yeah, actually, it's a state, state budgeted money from uh, the state of Vermont. So what they're doing is they're shedding a bunch of their agencies and, and part of that is to invest in the infrastructure throughout the state. So.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, we placed our cardiac monitors with also up-to-date uh, uh, equipment. Uh, we continue to uh, with a partnership with Central Vermont Medical Center. And we recycled approximately a thousand gallons of needles and liquid medications again last year. Um, that becomes a very good uh, productive uh, program. That the highest uh, yield that we get is out of the public safety building. So, and the, 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 um, the public really trust us. And that's a great uh, service that we have. Between that and the drug take-back bin, um, is very productive. Um, personnel are currently not requesting any full-time personnel in this budget. Um, as has been stated in prior years, um, sixteen career firefighters, four shifts of four personnel. Um, can bear out exactly what we need and control the overtime costs. Um. Code enforcement, health officers, there'll be an additional uh, PowerPoint presentation just on code enforcement, but I'll do a brief overview. Uh, code enforcement uh, continues to remain busy and still playing catch-up from COVID. And currently uh, to full staffing again. Our goal of, of code enforcement has always been compliance. But that said, two inspectors performed four thousand four hundred and eighteen inspections last year. Uh, that was, uh, on average, the code enforcement does over four thousand annually. We did see a dip because of COVID. We weren't able to go into people's homes and that was not safe for our individuals. And that was uh, actually subsequently, the state inspectors were having the same drop uh, in their inspection process. Um, that includes uh, the inspections where minimum having trash complaints, dog bites. Uh, numerous vacant building inspections, which we do semi-annually. And we continue to work with housing authorities, Capstone and Downstreet. Uh, and local landlords to improve the quality of life here in Berry City. There, the city currently has over twenty-six hundred apartments on the rental registry program. Um, and I guess had, there'll be additional PowerPoint with that. We continue to work with Janet to approve uh, building uh, applications here uh, in the city of Berry. Along with the electrical inspector. Uh, our fleet, our fleet remains in good shape. Uh, purchases of quality constructive equipment has proven to pay dividends forward to us. I'm proud to say our tower is back and has been completely overhauled by the manufacturer at no cost to the city. Um, Jack's Hydraulics, electrical components all have been upgraded and replaced. I'll say that our two thousand eight ambulance number three, which is. Years old is due to. Replacement uh, within the next order now. We will not see a, a delivery of that ambulance for twenty-four months, just because of uh, the, the supply chain. Um, they also, the nineteen ninety-three uh, engine three. It will be thirty years old next year and is up for replacement. To note, the life expectancy of the pumper is approximately twenty to twenty-five years. Um, as we get older, we get reduced the amount of credit that ISO allows us to have that engine in the service. So it really is important that we uh, follow that capital plan on the replacement of the. Vehicle. Um, then the fiscal year twenty-three budget, you have been provided a copy of the proposed uh, budget for twenty-four. You will notice that uh, the proposed budget is slightly higher at five point nine percent. A lot of it is due to the collective bargaining agreement obligations. Um, we have uh, been able to track over the uh, last three years. A nine percent decrease in the overtime budget and that's been verified by Dawn. Um, so we've continued to track our overtime and control it uh, as best as we can. Um. Uh, at, on one of the slides, you'll see that our reductions were uh, uh, totaling about nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Or three point three percent. Um, this covers from medical supplies, oxygen supplies and physicals. And we did that through a, uh, economy of scale uh, purchases. Um, I want to thank uh, their commitment to a higher standard of training and competency. You have some of the best online right here in Berry and I'm very proud of them all. I may answer any questions that you might have, and I'd like to just skim through the PowerPoints now that I have your attention away from me reading. So as you can see, the, the. So as you can see, the.
Sorry, it's catching up.
Yeah.
I went back to the beginning and.
Sure. Let's go to the next slide.
It's tired.
As you can see, we have twenty and a half full time employees, sixteen firefighters, four shifts of four. They're both cross side cross trained as firefighters and A M Ts or paramedics. We have the one fire marshal, one inspector, which is a combination building inspector, electrical inspector. The deputy chief, the fire chief and a halftime administrative assistant that is split with the police department. I've already gone through the calls. Ambulance billing. As I can say, is a cautiously optimistic on that, and I urge you to remain that way. Over five thousand, five hundred eighty two thousand in revenue currently. And like I said, it's cautiously optimistic on that.
So what's the price difference versus somebody that has public insurance versus private insurance for an ambulance ride?
So we don't discriminate, but they get the same price. So if somebody were to have like medic, say blue cost with shield. They get the full boat and then your deductible is part of that. So your insurance company would pay that portion. And then and their deductible will be paid for through the patient. If you have Medicare, Medicare generally runs eighty twenty, eighty percent. To Medicare, twenty percent on the individual, and then usually those folks set up a payment plan. Which we are obligated by the federal government. Now Medicaid folks are different story. What we're only allowed to charge a certain amount of money and that's it. Once the, once they've obligated that payment from the federal government, then we must write that off. So there's no way to collect that.
And what's the difference between what? How much money do you have to write off for somebody that has Medicaid for an ambulance ride is my question?
It's considerable. It's about ninety percent. And that's a guesstimate. So matters whether it's just a B L S transfer, basic life support. Or if it's a cardiac arrest that we do end up transporting. One of the things that happens is is that now with the new protocols, not all cardiac arrests get transported. The paramedics are able to call it on the scene after working at twenty minutes and then a person is is just left there. With a P D in the funeral home. Thank you very much.
Counselor Stuckwell.
About the code enforcement inspections, is there somewhere where you we have like an annual report? I thought I saw an annual report or something like. How many places you went to, what kinds of violations, what were the follow ups? Is there that somewhere to look at?
Yep. So annually, we put it in the the city report, but with our. PowerPoint presentation that I have prepared with the staff. Manager has that and will be scheduling to come back to do its own presentation.
Thanks.
All the inspections by are are all the field inspections by code enforcement? Are they done by? Howie and Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but the zoning administrator doesn't go out in the field.
No, no, she doesn't. And the only the only caveat is is that. If there's something that needs to be looked at and Janet can't be pulled away, she'll call up. The staff and say, hey, can you go out and take a look at this photo document and let me know what you find. So that tries to help out that way.
And in terms of, so as I understand it, Berry City has delegated authority for. Building code and the electrical code. But not not the plumbing code, right?
We do not, no.
And and so instead of the state fire marshal doing that, we do that internally as a city. Do you find that that's a revenue positive thing to do? At the the city level versus leaving it to the fire marshal? Are permits kind of on par with what? People would be paying on the state of Vermont to do that work and it doesn't have that delegated authority?
So our current permitting process is competitive with the state. We actually just are in the process of revamping. The electrical permit to mirror the state permitting numbers. So I mean, the fees. So we do keep up abreast with them. As far as the plumbing. I think that you have to look at there. If we were to take over the plumbing M O U, we would have to have a certified master plumber. That would take another body and then it would be a process to get in there. Right now, the plumbing inspector only does commercial properties. And so that would be a transition and. Knowing that the commissioner and. Director DeRozia is underneath the gun to to retain as much revenues as they can. I think it'd be very hard to 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 take away that M O U or get have them agree to give us the M O U on that. So I don't know how we would do that to be a net zero, if anything. I don't know if that answered your question, but I don't believe that that would be something that Director DeRozia would do.
Yeah, I was just curious if our if our by taking on this responsibility at the local level. If we're getting comparable revenues for comparable work.
I wouldn't think so. I I think one, one of the benefits of having an electrical inspector is that we have immediate. Access to our electricians. And so, but if you look at the revenues generated by electrical inspector. He is double duty as the minimum housing and deputy health officer offset that that lack in revenue. So it's not a net zero having the electrical. So I I'm assuming and I would say having a plumbing inspector to do the commercial end would not be beneficial to us.
Do you still want to keep going through the?
If we could just go to the next.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt, but I do have a question. So continue, please.
As you can see. Fiscal year twenty four is two point five million or five percent increase. Again, that's part of the. Collective bargaining unit obligations. I will leave it at that. There's our cuts. We I think I'm very comfortable with that, looking at our trending history and talking with the manager and Dawn. We had a very productive budget Congress with all the department heads and we played an active role in that.
This is where my question is, I just have to know, what is a one year reduction in furniture?
So.
Just curious.
So most of our furniture, the appliances, the washer, dryers and stuff like that are upstairs. Aren't budgeted in the general fund, aren't budgeted in the Mr. Bergeron's account. So what we did is, is okay, listen. Appliances are ten, twelve, it is we added in a line item to replace those. With the purchase of the refrigerator this year, we are comfortable to say, listen, we can back off on that. So.
If I may mayor, just. Really excited about one piece of this, which I think is good planning. Just highlighted in that orange box on the previous slide, which is we're we're starting to put away money for vehicle replacements. We with the council approved some vehicle purchases and one of the. One of the things we told you was that that's going to require less maintenance. And so what we decided was let's put that money we're saving from maintenance and put it away because. We're gonna need to buy more vehicles. And so when the time comes that we need to replace one of the fire trucks, ambulances. We don't have to find the full amount. We will have started putting away some money. So just want to. Call out attention to that line of to help us start saving money for for ongoing needs.
I will tell you that the last vehicle for the fire department is being picked up tomorrow. So we'll have completed our purchases and the staff fleet should be in good shape. I want to thank you for that. That's very important investment for our department and the police department. And we just are finishing the undercoating, which we did for both departments there. That'll be finished next week. Lieutenant Benson took care of that for us at a significant savings. So we did look at the cruisers and we did inspect them and. Having that program in place has really saved us as far as the rust and 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 that type of stuff. So.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much for the for the overview. And I'll just say that I saw today that Governor Scott issued an executive proclamation. Naming today first responder appreciation day. So it's great to have public safety and and I think. You know, it's it's important work. Everybody has a crisis now and then or can. Run into a safety issue and and they're there seven days a week, twenty four hours a day and answer the call. And so appreciate that. Thank you. I guess that takes us to approval to pay the remaining enterprise alley acquisition principal.
Thank you, Mayor. Don's here to answer questions as well if we need her and I know our accountant Fred is on as well. So thank you, Mayor. This is coming back to an item we had at our first F Y twenty four department. Which is to pay the remaining principal posing to do to pay the side of the fund balance. This is a big one for us. This one, we could do this immediately and save some money in F Y twenty three. It's about fifteen thousand dollars of general fund savings. Starting in twenty three into twenty four and clerk does remind me how many years.
It would be a total of just of fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So for. The foreseeable future, this is ten years. Thank you. Sorry, I should have done the one fifty divided. So. It 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 just, it helps us. This is fifteen thousand dollars in our budget. It's means a lot. And we think that this is the exact type of. Use for our fund balance, which is a one time non recurring expense. And this has the added benefit of creating. Some real significant meaningful general fund savings for ten years. So asking that this, we discussed this as part of the savings. That had come through and clerk does myself and Dawn's budget, asking for ratification so that we can. Recognize that savings immediately and it's a big part of crafting our F Y twenty, the rest of our F Y twenty four budget.
And as I understand, you're looking for a motion to the council authorize the city manager to use the fund balance to pay a hundred forty nine thousand one hundred fifty three. Dollars sixty three cents remaining principal on the purchase of sixteen Enterprise Alley with payment made in F Y twenty three.
Second.
There's a motion by Council Shonville, second by Council Wazza. Is there discussion?
Of course there is. Look, you know, you're not going to get me on this one because I was here when we passed six oh one B. And what we told taxpayers at that time. Is that the city needed to retain five percent of its annual expenditures. As and we told them straight up, it's a rainy day fund. So if there the city had flooded a number of times, we had a quite a number of unanticipated. Expenditures, we had deficit spent. We inherited a, I don't know how big was the cemetery deficit. Yeah, you had the for years, the city, the cemetery fund kept borrowing from the general fund and they had no prayer at paying it back. Because they weren't generating the revenue. So what we told people at that time, and again, it's just philosophical difference. What we told people at that time. Because there were some taxpayers who pushed back and they said, well, you're just going to raid this thing. You're going to create this fund and you're going to raid it. And we said, no, we're not going to do that at all. We will absorb deficits. So if we had. A million dollars of, well, we couldn't have a million dollars under six oh one B, but if we had half a million dollars in our general fund. As a fund balance and we happen to deficit spend one hundred thousand dollars, well, we don't have to raise taxes. The next year to make up for that. We can, we can ease you into it. So again, it's just, you know, it's just philosophical. I mean, I understand that that. Well, first of all, you've got one fund paying another. So even if one fund is paying interest expense, the other fund is is collecting interest income. And I do understand that one is an enterprise fund and one isn't. But you know, even though we'll save fifteen thousand in the budget. Just won't receive about a hundred group. And that's the only issue I have with it. It's not, again, I'm not going to follow my sword over it. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to not support the budget over it. I'm not going to flip out. It's just philosophical and I just strongly believe. Because of the the way six oh one B was presented to the voters back when I was mayor, I can't support this. That's all. And it'll so it'll pass six to one.
So we could we not just put it into the budget and then just add the revenue line? Wouldn't that be this way? The people voters get to.
It's still vote, no. No, I mean, what I want is I want that hundred thousand going back to the taxpayers. I understand. I get it. That's what I want because that's and and again. Boy, I think Michael, you might have been, but I think the majority of you. And Carol, of course, is clerk and but Carol was not a member of the council at that time. So she sat quietly by and watched the rest of us say things. And and again, it was just a commitment that was made and and I'm not going to go back on it. I would prefer. That, you know, and my question would be, why are you doing it now? Wait until January? Because once the audit comes back, you have to return the money to the taxpayers. So, you know, again, for those reasons, I'm out.
Yes, it is.
Are there any other? Since discussion items or would any staff?
Counselor Lozong, what do you mean by? After the audit, the money would have to be returned.
Because if you don't designate, if you don't, if you wait until the audit, I mean, I'd even argue that in this day and age, we know what our surplus is.
Right.
We've got it to within, Dawn's really good at what she does. She's got it to within five percent. No. Just does. It's not the old ledger days. So I mean, if I was a real fanatic about this, I could argue. You already know what your fund balance is. So therefore you have to give that excess of five percent back to the voters. Once the audit comes out and the auditor says, hey, here's your fund balance. You take your expenditures multiplied by five percent and whatever the difference is, that has to go back to the voters.
Right.
You've lost the opportunity to designate any of it. So by doing it now, you sort of do a little end around or a double reverse, if you will. And it's fine. It's fine. I just feel strongly about it. That's all.
I would just say that I I completely hear and understand Counselor Lozon's concerns, but for me, this either way, we're giving a net benefit to the taxpayer. So it seems like a fine use of the money to me.
One, one thing that stands out to me with what you said, Tom, was you described this as being a rainy day fund or like a reserve fund that could carry over versus. An undesignedated fund balance. And I recall while you you weren't on council at the time. Raising the issue with manager McKenzie that should we have? A rainy day day fund in a reserve account that. That potentially could be. Could be used in emergencies situations with clear guardrails. So that it's not a slush fund and at. Said one year, two years ago, I can't remember, but. We did not move forward with that proposal, but but we did discuss it a little bit. But it was, there was never any. Characterization of six oh one being a rainy, like a rainy day fund or a reserve fund.
It's exactly what it is. I mean, a fund balance is specifically designed to assist the city to keep the tax rate level. So if all of a sudden that. You know, that half. Million dollar pumper that the chief was just speaking of, if all of a sudden, you know, that crapped out. And you need to have a million dollar pumper and bonding isn't an option. You have a pool of money. Where you can go. That's specifically what a general fund is for. It absorbs, if you have a deficit, you know, for example, we can have up to five percent. Of our annual expenditures in a in a general fund and a fund balance. So if we were to deficit spend two hundred thousand dollars. Well, before we're giving any money back to the voters, we got to make up that two hundred thousand dollars. We got to get it back up to five percent. So, you know, in fact, we, you know, people use a lot of it. The one I always just liked the most was slush fund because I didn't. Yeah, but it's. And not even, you know, I always preferred it is for unanticipated expenditures or deficit absorption.
Yeah, we we got people to vote for it based on that. It's a valid point.
Just like to point out that I think personally, I think. Personally, physically think that five percent in a fund balance is too low. We. Go forty five to as late seventy five days of collecting our first tax payments. And so we take. That divided by three sixty five, that is approximately twelve percent. That is a physically responsible fund balance that you should be maintaining. So just wanted to add that. So, just wanted to add that.
That's not, but the voters pass. We were lucky to get five.
Yeah, well, I, I was just going to state that it's not as if we are. By approve, i- if this is approved, it's not as if council is, you know, a, a. Demolish, draining. The fund balance, even if we approve this and then tomorrow there's an unexpected quarter million dollar disaster. We can still do both and still have money left over in the fund balance. So, so um. Uh, that's a completely valid concern. And if we were there, I don't think I'd be supporting this motion, but that's. Another reason why I feel okay supporting this.
Um, so, so I was, I was going to ma- make that point as well. Um, I think just two, two points on this from my end. Um. I think the, I think we, we really uh value the, the fifteen thousand, I think is a, is a big benefit to, to taxpayers in a different way, which is a critical service. That we can fund. Um, and something else we don't have to cut in the budget. I think the, the value of a, of um. Of this hundred forty-nine thousand is returning to taxpayers. Didn't do the math. I know we did the math in August. It's going to be less than fifty dollars per taxpayer, which I'm not. I know fifty dollars means a lot to a lot of people, but I think fifteen thousand dollars of cut city services would also be an impact and I, and that's. Part of the trade-off we're considering as we bring this to you. I think uh, Counselor Lozon. I would love to work with you on the charter because when we talked about this in August, the, the legal. Advice we got was that it's hard. The, the language is, is not great for um, application of this. Um, we asked Oliver about this and we, we, we just didn't get a clear answer because the, the, uh, what the language says is just not. Doesn't translate well to the accounting world. Um, so I think. I, I would love to work to clean this up so that um, there is, it, it is unclear now. Um, and I think we can get to a point where. We can be very specific about uses of fund balance. Um, and there can be votes at the council. Where, you know, we feel good about the, the options. I think right now, one of our challenges. Is that the language doesn't mesh well sort of with the accounting world, which is why. We didn't get a clear opinion in, in August about this, this topic.
But our auditor is.
Our auditor has told us this is, this is very valid use and, and action. Yes.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Counselor Derry.
Don, would you approve this? Or would you say I'm not interested? Well, you, you're our finance director. I, you know, think that you have a lot of stake in the game here. Thank you for your opinion.
Alright, we motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of uh, accepting the manager's recommendation? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Yeah, I have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, so that takes us to um upcoming business and.
I, I'm sorry. I just want to thank Fred de Plessy for being um, on the call and we, we didn't call on you, Fred. And I hope that you've been spending the time reading a good book, which is what I tend to do while waiting for us, so.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks. Thanks, Carol. And I did.
So that takes us to item ten on the agenda, upcoming business. So we uh heard that there's going to be uh manufacturing cannabis. We've heard. Uh, license coming before the council. Um, the committee reset, maybe not next meeting, but um sometime in.
Very soon, yep.
November. Um, I, Counselor Stockwell and I will be sponsoring um, uh, the grant application being forwarded by the diversity and equity committee. Which is now no longer in suspension. Um, and uh, and, and I also think we need to get a charter working group going. Um, start talking about uh, any, any items like, like uh clarification of six oh one B. Um, for the March ballot, uh, because that has to have a pretty long run-up and it's our highest law and most of our most important. Uh, documents and so these are a little bit more process behind it.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. Carol, could you just remind us of the drop dead date to approve?
Well, um, the, the first deadline will come at the, like the very last meeting in December. At which point in time we have to warn the first public hearing and we typically warn the second public hearing at the same. Time. We don't have to have language then. On the, the first public hearing will happen thirty to forty days before town meeting. That's will be the, the first opportunity for. That'll be usually the first and perhaps the last opportunity to make adjustments. Um, to language, but we can be working on the language pretty much all through January.
And is it the, for the first versus the second hearing? Is it the significant change rules in effect that when you get to the second hearing?
No, that's ordinance.
So that, okay, that does not.
No, no. What, what applies is that um, we have to have the language locked. By the time we approve the warning. It's the, is the biggest thing. And the warning has to be up and uh, no. No, that's usually before. The second hearing tends to fall after. The um, warning is approved.
So let me just, sorry, let me just re-simplify the joke. Our last chance to change the language in any way is realistically the first public hearing.
The, uh, the very last opportunity is when the warning gets approved for the town meeting. Or, yeah.
Okay, not a warning for the hearing, but the warning for the town.
Which is, which is um, uh, at least thirty days before, so. I'm not sure what the, yeah, what, I can't remember what the date is this coming March. I think it may be the third.
I think so, that's.
Um, in which case it would be like February first would be the last date for. For first reading and for approval of the um, the warning. So.
Oh, it's March seventh, actually.
Really?
Yeah, Tuesday, the twenty, February twenty-eighth is a Tuesday.
Alright, any other upcoming items that people want to preview?
Next week's uh department reviews uh will be uh Janet, Jeff and uh Stephanie. So uh, planning permitting assessment. Buildings, community services, recreation and uh revenues as well.
ETA on the capital plan.
So we should have um, a next draft of that, uh, probably the, the meeting after that. It'll be in mid-November and be the next draft.
Okay.
Terrific. Thank you.
Sure.
Alright. There are no other. Upcoming items, people want to preview. That takes us to the round table. I'll start with uh. Uh, word three, um, Counselor Stockwell.
Just a shout out to whoever's doing the Halloween display at the corner of Howard and River Street. Really great spirit there. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor Stockwell. Counselor Derry.
Uh, just excited for all the community events that are going to be going on this weekend. And I know that we're going to get to kick off some trunk or treat stuff. I know that Spalding has a playoff football game uh at Bellas Falls. They are the number one seed. We are the number eight seed. But as Tom said, any given time you can win a game. Um, so really we have a lot of support behind our players. Um, and then we also have all these amazing trick or treat events going on throughout the weekend um, for people to be involved with. So um, really, it's just a blessing to be involved in this community. Uh, and also a shout out to Norwich University who had up my flag football players uh on the field. We got to do a meet and greet uh with their coach and their players in the locker room. Um, just a great community building experience. Um, and I'll pass with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor D, and Counselor Wazza.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all the people that donated for the. Um. Light up the, the city for Mary Berry holidays. Uh, they hit their five thousand dollar goals so that they can purchase lights and gar- garland. Garland, I don't know why that sounds very funny, but it sounds very funny. Um, so and super thanks to uh Tracy for pushing that forward because. Makes our vibrant downtown. Beautiful lights. We all love it, to be honest. Maybe.
Thank you. Uh, and uh, thank you, Nicholas, for. Managing the uh Wheels for Worth program that's going to be going on Thursday through Saturday. And thank you. Um, how'd you enjoy Wabi, by the way?
Great.
Thank you to Chief. You know, it, it, you know, and to you for uh, you know, because he called me and he was actually touring the site with the governor when he got on the phone. And he said, well, the, you know, the governor's insisting that I call the city, you know, they're our host city and, and let them know what's going on. Wabi couldn't understand why he had to do that. Uh, but that's just him and he does a fantastic job. His, his enthusiasm is contagious.
Yes.
Uh, it, it really is a great program. For those who aren't familiar with it, Governor Scott started this program almost two decades ago. It's raised over half a million dollars uh for uh, for public assistance. And the gist of it is if you have tires that you want to get rid of. Um, maybe they've been hanging around your garage for a while. The car is long gone and they still have some life in them. You. Can bring them down. They'll take those tires off their, off your hands. They'll inspect them. They have people there who inspect them. And if they're safe, they make them available to someone who may not be able to afford a new or even normally a decent used set of tires. And they, they do that at a significantly reduced price. If your tires are past their useful life. Then you'll pay a very small fee and they'll take them off your hands. So, you know, everybody wins and it's just a great event. So I'll be down there stacking tires. I do not inspect them, uh, but I absolutely uh, you know, can stack them. And uh, so it's a great event. If any of you want to wander by and stack tires. Uh, feel free. And, and thanks for your encouraging words, Chiefs, giving me an atta boy. It's like, I pull my back out. So thanks for that. Yeah, we'll have the EMTs right across the street. So that's, that's good too. And uh, you know, along another note, uh, and I should have thought to mention this, Chief, uh, when you were giving your presentation. We hear a lot about the high cost of energy. And the more I read about people uh burning wood and then the more I read about the wood industry and how challenged that is right now, not only in terms of price. But supply, I cringe a little bit because I've been through this, I've lived through this before and I remember the chimney fires. When people were burning wood and they really hadn't had their chimneys inspected in years because they haven't burned wood. Until the last time that oil got to four, four fifty gallons. So, you know, if there's anyone out there, you know, have your chimney inspected, you know, make sure you're burning. Don't burn green wood, burn dry wood. And make sure you have your, your chimney inspected. And with that, I'm all set.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Lozon. Counselor Shonville?
I pass.
Alright, and uh, the only thing I would add to that is uh, also a great time of year to get your. Um, to check your smoke and uh, smoke alarms. Um, get your batteries checked and do a test. Um, and I, I also just wanted to give the council heads up that I've uh, had a good time working with. Uh, State Representative Anthony and the Transportation Advisory Committee Chair. Uh, Helen and uh, the regional uh, transportation planner. Uh, Christian Myers, uh, just investigating the reconnecting communities grant. It's a five billion dollar program. Um, that uh, could potentially help us bundle some projects if they're Route sixty-two. Main Street, Berlin Street area where there's been quite a bit of focus. Uh, it's un, unclear right now if it, it's a, it's a good fit, but it is. Something that we've just been looking into to see if that might be an opportunity. To uh, connect some resources with big federal dollars to get uh, get projects done in Berry City. With that, I'll pass. And so that takes us to item twelve, which I don't think we need any more exact. Session. We're good with that, so. Motion, motion adjourned by Boone, second by Counselor Wazza. All those in favor, say aye. Yeah, I said it. We are adjourned.